Good evening and thank you for joining us this morning, or this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mansfield. Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Blad.
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you'd remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Mike Popovich representing the First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in a free country to exercise the care and protection of our citizens. We thank you for this body. Give them wisdom, give them grace, give them understanding. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you. We move to agenda item number three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings, clarification and regular council meetings of January 6, 2022. B. Material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the month of December 2021. D. Animal Shelter Advisory Board reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointments of Kelly Boudry and Danielle Lewis Ekstrom to continue their service as a member of the Animal Service Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Kelly's term will begin February 9, 2022, and will expire February 9, 2024. Danielle's term will begin February 17, 2022, and will expire February 17, 2024. Danielle will serve as a representative of the Banach Humane Society. E. Pocatello Development Authority appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Rick Cheatham to serve as a member of the Pocatello Development Authority, replacing Heidi Adamson. Rick's term will begin February 4, 2022, and will expire May 1, 2024. F. Pocatello Regional Airport Commission reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Larry Bell to continue serving on the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Larry's term will begin February 5, 2022, and will expire February 5, 2024. G. Council decision zoning designation and map and comprehensive plan land use map amendment approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision to approve the request from Pocatello Quinn LLC to amend the zoning designation of approximately 10.58 acres of land located at the 669 West Quinn, south of Quinn Road and Harley Drive intersection from Industrial I to Commercial General CG, with a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan map designation of Employment E to Commercial C. H. Council decision vacation and abandonment of .12 acres of wedgeway. Council may wish to adopt this decision to vacate and abandon the public's interest in approximately .12 acres of wedgeway. I. Council decision Tuscany Commercial Plaza vacation of easement. Council may wish to adopt this decision to vacate a 24-foot wide private easement for ingress and egress located at the easterly 12 feet of Lot 3 and 4, Block 1, and westerly 12 feet of Lot 5, Block 1, Tuscany Commercial Plaza subdivision. J. Council decision the townhomes at City View final plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a final plat for the townhomes at City View, which subdivides approximately 1.81 acres of land into nine lots, eight lots to be developed as townhomes, and one common lot. The property is located within Residential Low Density RL and Residential Estates RE, zoning districts, and is at the end of Ammon Street. Access will be provided via Ammon Drive. K. Council decision Point View Apartments First Edition Final Plat Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for the Point View Apartments First Edition, which subdivides approximately 1.83 acres of land into nine lots, subject to conditions. The property is located within a residential, commercial, professional, RCP zoning district, and is north of Brock Drive, south of Quinn Road, and east of Philbin Road. Access will be provided from Brock Drive via Philbin Road to the west. L. Citizen donation acceptance for K-9 officer. Council may wish to accept a donation from the Jason Meter family in the amount of $10,000 for the purchase of a new K-9 to be used in the police department. This K-9 officer will replace K-9 Officer Dex, who passed away due to cancer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Lurick.
I move that, oh, disappeared. I move that we approve the consent agenda items A and then D through L.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick, and a second by Ortega to four items. Everything but B and C was pulled. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you. We have item B.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable voting affirmatively on any financial matters because we don't have a CFO, and we know from one of our previous CFO's final presentations that we also don't have best practice checks, balances, processes, and procedures in place. And so I don't feel that I have the information and assurances that I need in order to do my statutory job in a responsible manner.
I agree.
So you don't feel comfortable voting on the financial statements?
On finance matters, because we really don't have a qualified person in charge, and we don't have the appropriate check. We know we don't have the appropriate checks and balances as per our previous CFO. He made recommendations, and we've, you know, and I'm not, we've not done anything with those recommendations, and therefore I don't feel comfortable continuing to vote affirmatively on financial matters.
So I, go ahead, Rick.
Mr. Mayor, I think these are bills the city's accumulated. I think not voting against them is simply saying you want the city to go bankrupt, and I think that's absolutely wrong.
Well, I just, I just might add that we have an extremely good financial department that has been doing this job. The CFO didn't prepare these before. The, the person that has prepared them in the past has continued to prepare them. I think that they're accurate, they're, they're right. And I don't think that, you know, we've got a great department right there. Because you don't have a CFO doesn't mean the world stops.
Well, but we went from a bunch of detail to, back to this, no detail.
And if you would like to-
So if the same person was preparing it, why can't we just have the detail like we were getting?
If you would like the detail, you're more than welcome to go and have them pull it and do that. They just have not sent the detail, but that detail is in here. Not the, not the pages and pages of it.
Jim Krueger was providing details, detailed material claims, reports. So if the same person is preparing them now than was preparing them when Jim was here, why can't they continue to do it the same way?
The same person was preparing this report, which would follow up with that detailed expense report that you're talking about. Jim was sending that detailed expense report. If you would like to see those, then they're available in the finance office for you to take a look at.
Mayor, I don't think the council, if they want that to be a part of the council meeting, should have to go back and ferret it out.
And I'm okay with that. You know, I don't have an issue with that at all.
I know, I know. There's several different issues here. I think it ought to be something that's available to council. That's a request they're making. I don't think-
It is, and it's always been available to council. Anytime council's wanted it, it's been available.
Well, maybe available and provided, maybe.
Two different things. You're asking for available, it's available. You want to provide it, then we'll have it.
I think it needs to be provided.
Then I'll have them start sending the, providing it. But I do agree with Rick, you, or with our council president, Cheatham. We have a statutory responsibility to pay the bills that we have incurred.
But the bills have already been paid. This is after the fact.
Yes, Jim confirmed to us-
That we approved these after the fact. They've already been paid.
They've been paid. So that's not the point. The point is that our accepting it is essentially a rubber stamp of a de facto done deal, which, that's a whole nother set of conversations. But this voting no will in no way cause the city not to pay its bills because they've already been paid.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve agenda item B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lurick to approve agenda item B, and we have a second by council president Cheatham. I think it's a necessary thing. I think you've got to approve those, council. If you want more detail, then we can definitely get that included and set that out.
Yeah, provided.
We can definitely get that provided and stuff, but it is irresponsible not to at this point, I believe.
Well, I don't think, but we've done this after the fact before. We're acting like we're setting a precedent. We've done this after the fact before. We're not setting a precedent. We're not doing it tonight.
I didn't say that we are setting a precedent. I am saying we have a statutory responsibility to do that. And a number of the checks have not been sent and aren't sent, regardless of what Jim said. He was, he, they have not been sent, and they'll be sent Friday morning, tomorrow morning, after they've been approved. We have a motion in by Lurick, a second by council president Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Bray.
I'm hard pressed on this. I don't think we should default. I, I know what our accounting office told us, that they were already all paid beforehand, so I don't, I think it's a false argument. And I don't expect us to get detail after the fact. We often miss that.
I might just add, though, remember, you never asked for the detail before, and Jim started providing the detail.
No, we did ask for the detail. That's why he started providing it.
Jim started providing that six months ago, eight months ago.
Because we asked for it.
We asked for it.
And, and he's no longer here, and so-
We know that.
That didn't happen. And so because that didn't happen, I think it's irresponsible not to approve them.
Okay, well, you're welcome to your opinion. Do I get to vote?
I'm going to be irresponsible then. I'll say no.
And I'm going to say no. No.
Stevens?
No.
So, council, what do we do then?
Well, I guess at this point, if council were approving these prior purchases, I guess we need to contact and see if people we owe money to are willing to hold off and see if the council really wants to reconsider it. I mean, at this point, the council didn't approve these purchases, the material claims.
If everything's provided, if the detail is provided, can we put that on the agenda for the 17th?
Yeah. I mean, the, the month's not over. The month is, I guess what you could do is push this off and carry it to the, the second meeting in February, and then give council an opportunity to reconsider their action here. I'm not controlling the meeting, ma'am.
I know. I had my hand up.
But that's where we're at.
Well, that's what we will do then, is we'll put it on the next agenda and-
Provide the details.
Provide the-
Provide the details.
The detail that the council members are asking for then, and hopefully we'll go from there, and, and we'll see if there's any legal action taken by any of the vendors.
And-
We'll need to just reach out, I guess have finance do that tomorrow, reach out to the people that we've-
I think it's, in my opinion, merits, it's good business practice to let them know that if they're anticipating us paying them tomorrow, that we're not going to position to pay them tomorrow.
Okay. Then we'll, then we'll do that.
Excuse me?
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
All right. I mean, it seems to me that the first sort on this is the ones that haven't been paid, because the ones that have, have been paid, and it, I mean, we, I am of the clear understanding that at least some of these have been paid. And so obviously, the ones that have already been paid are not an issue. So therefore, that should cut down on the workload for whomever, because we are only dealing with those that have not, at this point, been paid. And I have no idea how many that might be.
Well, if I may, Your Honor, that's going to be up to the finance staff tomorrow to go through it. And I mean, and that's, and if they need my help or whatever, I'm happy to do it. I'm not an accountant. But the basic idea is that if we have checks ready to be shipped out, we can't ship them out, we're going to have to be reaching out to people. What that entails, I don't know.
Right. And obviously, the P cards is not an issue, because a P card is a P card.
Correct. But you have also outstanding, I don't know, you're looking, Roto Inc., Rootware Inc., $150,917.82.
Right.
You know, I don't know where that's at.
Right. I don't either. That's kind of part of the point.
Okay, well, what we'll do is, we'll do that, and I'm assuming-
This has a title on it, of the December 1920, or 2021 material claims report. It seems like we're way after the fact to me.
We'll see what we are.
You know what I'm saying?
Let's see what you're saying, yeah. We also have a CFO that sent a CAF report with our former CFO's name on it as the CFO, the last one, and so-
But I'm saying-
We'll take a look at it, and we'll go from there.
This was produced, and so I don't think we're way out of line, saying if we're getting a December thing in February, that this is way out of line.
Well, we'll see what happens with it. The decision's been made, and we'll go from there, the staff, and we'll, we'll, we'll react appropriately and do what we need to do there. So we'll see that again, council, on the 17th, the meeting on the 17th. We'll move to agenda item four as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. February 10, 9:00 a.m. will be a city council work session immediately followed by a special city council meeting. February 17, 2:00 p.m., city council liaison work session clarification meeting. February 17, 5:30 p.m. will be a council clarification meeting, and then February 17 at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. On February 21, city offices will be closed for President's Day. However, garbage and recycle pickups will remain on schedule. Reminder, citizens are required to wear face coverings when entering any city of Pocatello building or facility, or while riding in public transportation, buses, and at the Pocatello Airport. As a reminder also, please keep your sidewalks clear of snow and ice, and do not place the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard.
Excuse me? Could you give us some kind of notion without giving inappropriate details? What is the special city council meeting on February 10? What is the topic? What is the general arena of discussion?
It's an executive session that we will have, and we'll discuss-
Okay.
The things in there. That's, that's what those are, always will be a special meeting.
All right, well, it-
Well, I thought, I thought we would say executive session versus-
They changed it. It's been changed from executive session to special city council meeting.
Okay. Well, that was, that was what was unclear, because, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that's what that is. All right, public hearing. Agenda item five, public hearing, community development block grant, CDBG 2022 to 2026, five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, analysis impediments to fair housing, and citizens participation plan. This time is being set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding community development block grant, CDBG draft 2022 to 2026 consolidated plan program year 2022, annual action plan, analysis of impediments to fair housing, and citizens participation plan. Following the public hearing, the council may wish to authorize submission of the plan, along with any additional elements required to meet U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD requirements to HUD for review and approval. Once approved by HUD, these documents will govern expenditures of CDBG funds for the next five years. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor Blad. I'm the city council president. I'm the community development block grant program coordinator for the city. As described by the mayor, this public hearing is the oral comment opportunity for the city's five-year consolidated plan, program year 2022, annual action plan, analysis of impediments to fair housing, and our citizen participation plan as amended. Per the city's adopted CDBG citizen participation plan, and in accordance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requirements, the city has posted these documents for a 30-day written comment period, and will conclude public comment with this hearing. All comments will be incorporated into the plans. Following tonight's hearing, the council may wish to vote to approve the documents and authorize submission of the con-plan, annual action plan, analysis of impediments to fair housing, and citizen participation plan, along with any elements required to meet HUD approval for their review and final approval. Per HUD requirements, all CDBG entitlement communities are required to have a five-year consolidated plan in place in order to guide the CDBG program activities. This plan serves as the master plan and guiding document to address the needs of the city's target population, our low-to-moderate-income residents, and to help the city achieve its goals established by the plan over the next five years from program year 2022 through program year 2026. Included in the plan is the first-year strategic plan, called the annual action plan, as well as an analysis of impediments to fair housing, or the AI. The AI identifies Fair Housing Act-related issues and barriers, as well as strategies to address these concerns. As you will note in the consolidated plan, all 245 pages of it, the city has projected the next five years of CDBG entitlement funding and proposed a spending plan to address the top areas of need in Pocatello. Over the next five years, the city will allocate $910,000 to address affordable housing. This is approximately 40% of the projected five-year allocation. The city is proposing $425,000 toward public infrastructure, which includes sidewalks in our low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods, and ADA-accessible ramps or other infrastructure features. For public facilities, we are proposing to fund $193,700, which will allow the city to perform emergency repairs in our public facilities, such as our shelters or the senior center, as well as fulfill our commitment to fund the acquisition of the property that was used for the new Aid for Friends Homeless Shelter. In addition, this funding can be coupled with the infrastructure funding for proposed projects such as new PRTA bus stops or park improvements in our LMI neighborhoods. The final two categories of funding are public services and administrative services. Per HUD, public services are capped at 15% of our city's entitlement each year, so we propose funding at the maximum 15% for each of the five program years, for a total of approximately $344,700. This allows for assistance to local programs and partners to assist our target populations through activities such as social services, case management services, and transportation. Finally, administrative services is capped at 20% per year, based on HUD requirements, and we are proposing funding the full 20% for each program year. This is equal to about $461,600 over five years. This allows for personnel to manage the program, as well as provide our technical assistance to our local partners, and conduct any required fair housing activities, such as our trainings and responding to complaints. The consolidated plan projects federal funding to be approximately $462,000 per year, including $25,000 in program income for year one. This is a total of $2335,000 over the five years. The areas, the amended citizen participation plan will allow staff to increase or decrease the program budget in proportion in the event the HUD entitlement is slightly different from that projected amount. All future annual action plans will require the public comment period and council approval, and any substantial changes will also come to the council for approval. Copies of this recommendation have been made available for the public to access at the Marshall Public Library, NeighborWorks Pocatello Life, Inc., the Housing Authority at City Hall, and on the city website. We had a 30-day comment period that began on January 2, 2022, at noon, and it concludes with this oral comment opportunity tonight. To date, we have received no written comments. As I mentioned, following tonight's hearing, the council may wish to vote to approve the documents and authorize submission of the plans to HUD, along with any other additional elements required to meet HUD approval. So that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions.
Questions, council?
All right.
See and none. And you did say that we had, you had not received any written correspondence?
No written comments, no.
Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office?
No.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we would look for any testimony supporting the application. If you'd please write your name down there on that sheet. May I introduce yourself?
Okay. Hi, I'm Alfreda Van. My address is 939 North 9th, Pocatello, Idaho, and I'm here representing a resident, being a resident, as well as being part of the Bonneville Neighborhood Association. And we're in full support of the council proposing and passing the CDBG funds from HUD. We understand and recognize the need, because there is a great need for affordable housing in this area, in Pocatello. Our homeless population is growing, and, and the needs are just absolutely astounding, especially the mental health needs in this community. So we're asking, the Bonneville Neighborhood Association, we're asking that you do pass and accept this proposal for CDBG funds from HUD. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Christina, it looks like you had raving review. Do you want to say anything, or?
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
I think the many pages of the plans probably speak for themselves, but I, you know, we've, we've tried to make this clear and targeted to our goals and needs as identified through this public process, and hope that the council will approve the plans for the next five years, so we can continue to help our low-to-moderate-income residents in the city.
Super. Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Yes, thank you for your work. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. To council this items, before you had to wish to proceed. Roger?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the community block grant, CBG 2022 through 2026, five-year consolidated plan, that it should be submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for their approval, and we will use these documents to govern how our CDB funds will be used for the next five years if they're not modified.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Ortega.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Super, thank you. Agenda item six, final plat application crest, U.S. State's Division IV. Council may wish to approve the final plat application submitted by Satterfield Realty and Development, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide 20.77 acres more or less into 32 lots. The proposed subdivision is generally located east of Legacy Drive and north of Autumn Range Road. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Councilwoman Stevens?
I move that we approve agenda item six as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, Final Platte Application, Iron Eagle Division Three. Council may wish to approve the Final Platte Application submitted by Ron Dykman, represented by HLE Incorporated, to subdivide 3.06 acres more or less into 10 residential lots. The proposed subdivision is along the north extension of Bogey Lane. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Seven, the Final Platte Application for Iron Eagle Division Three as outlined in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Grant Application, Water Trail Phase Three. Council may wish to ratify approval of a grant application and, if awarded, authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. The Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation grant in the amount of $68,000 requires a 20% local match, which will be funded using in-kind support and cash donations. Grant funding will be used to complete river access projects at Batiste Road and Douglas Lane, as outlined in the Portnif River Vision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Eight, Grant Application as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, have the cash donations already been received, or are we approving those before we actually have them in hand?
I think it said they were already.
Evening, council. Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Administrator. We have a letter of commitment for one of the cash donations from the Sage First Step Land Trust for $5,000. And the second one, I have a verbal, but the company didn't want to go public yet. And then I'm going to solicit additional donations from a couple other companies. So I'm fairly mostly secure, 90%, that we will get the money.
Thank you. Super, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, Grant Support Request, Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation, IDPR, Recreation Trails Program Grant Application, Portnif Greenway Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to consider a request by Portnif Greenway Foundation requesting city council support for submission of a grant application under the IDPR Recreational Trails Program to fund an extension of the Brennan Trail to North Main Extension, and if awarded, authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the grant if necessary and accept ownership of the trail upon completion, subject to legal department review. The cost of the Brennan Trail extension is approximately $60,000, with the required match of 25% in the amount of $15,000, which would be funded by the Portnif Greenway Foundation. The city of Pocatello would have full ownership of the trail upon completion. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the grant support request by Portnif Greenway Foundation requesting city council support as outlined in Agenda Item Number Nine. And if awarded, authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the grant and accept ownership of the trail upon completion, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, Fuel Mitigation Project Contract Amendment, City Creek Russian Olive Removal Addendum, City Creek Russian Olive Removal. Council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent contract documents with CR Fence Company, subject to legal department review, in the amount of $58,800 for Russian olive removal in the City Creek related to the project, which has been awarded grant funding through the Idaho Department of Lands. Work is expected to begin immediately. Councilwoman Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 10 and all pertinent signatures as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Professional Services Agreement, Task Order Number Three, Well Number Two Replacement, Water Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and authorize the mayor's signature on a professional service agreement, subject to legal department review, related to Task Order Number Three, Well Number Two Replacement. The cost of the service is $205,200. Funding is available through the funds received within the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And I know we have some questions on this, Justin, but as Justin's coming, I would entertain a motion unless you want to answer the questions first.
I think you have to have a motion before you have discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number 11, the Professional Services Agreement, Task Order Number Three, for Well Number Two Replacement through the Water Department, authorizing the mayor's signature on the agreement, all subject to legal department review.
Second.
So we have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lurick, and we have some questions.
Justin, last year, about, it's not even been a year yet, we're like about eight days, I think it is, we had a long session of groundwater presentation and nitrates. And we were told at that time that this well had at least a five-year life, if not going through 2026, if not through 2050. So I got some questions. When was this well shut down?
This well was shut down on October 14, 2021, is when we received a notice from our lab, based on a sample that was submitted, that showed that we had a high nitrate level that exceeded the maximum contaminant level for drinking water. So the well was immediately shut down at that time.
So have we been testing this well since to see if it's?
We have.
Is it continuing its uptick?
We have. And it, so we have been testing that well on a weekly basis. That well has fluctuated, but the current MCL, or maximum contaminant, level is a 10 milligrams per liter. That well has been fluctuating between as high as 15 to hovering just above 10 consistently since that date.
I'm sorry, as high as what and as low as what?
15.
And the low was?
Just barely above 10.
Okay. 10 to 15.
Yep.
So is it a trend towards the 10, or is it doing this?
It was an immediate spike, and the trend was up, and then it's been coming back The thing to understand with this particular well, it is a very shallow well, so it's only drilled to 89 feet. The well was developed in 1926. It's the oldest well that the city has. Development during that time period was relatively, you know, once they found water at 30, 40 feet, they would drill down to create a drought level that was appropriate to operate the well, but they typically stopped around, you know, 80 to 100 feet at that time. We do have a well that's within 100 feet of this other well. The nitrate level is at a three. It's drilled to a much deeper depth, and so by re-drilling this well to a depth comparable to our existing well, it would be out of the action limit and should not be under the influence and concern of nitrate. But there is always certainly a concern for nitrate. I mean, it is naturally occurring and known substance within our aquifer.
So we can drill the existing well too deeper?
No. We cannot drill the existing well, and that would not be our recommendation, because drilling within the existing well would be a reduction of the capacity of that well. So we would make a recommendation to drill, we found three potential sites that are within the vicinity. This well is within the Ross Park area, that would plug into the existing transmission lines and provide the capacity needed for that area. Well Number Two, just so you guys understand, produces about 400 million gallons annually. That's roughly 8% of the volume of our water. We cannot continue to operate and provide the service we need with discontinuation of our sources. So we saw this as an immediate need. We're requesting use of ARPA funds that are established for water and sewer projects. And so, any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. So will we get the same priority date if we transfer this well to another well? You know, I mean, we've got a 1926 water right. Do we, can we transfer that water right to another well if we cap this well?
Yes, we could if we went through a transfer process, but no, we would not lose any of the priority date.
Okay, so we maintain our priority date?
Yeah.
Okay. I have two different lines of questioning, because at first, I really understood this was one of our highest, if not the highest-producing, well we have, and I understood urgency. But then I looked in more detail, and I found out that the contractor had signed the agreement on the 30th of November. Legal had approved it the 17th of December, and here we're getting it in February. So it seems like some of the urgency has dissipated. And then it says it'll take up to a year to get this in. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be probably the approximation of a year from design to completion. I would anticipate nine to 12 months. I'm a little uncertain about the approval of the November date of the contract.
It's in our stuff here. It wasn't our signature, it was the signature by the Professional Services Agreement. They've signed it, we haven't.
Oh, that's correct. We've been in process. There's been some study sessions that we had tried to schedule within November to discuss that. Many of the study sessions had been canceled, and so we felt that we would just bring this forward for approval. I know Public Works is planning for a discussion about some of the ARPA funding and certain projects, and this was one of the top projects under that list.
Yeah, and I guess I have some more questions, because it seems like, I went through that presentation, because, you know, you learn one thing going through it, you learn another thing when you're under more crisis. And when I looked at it, it seems like all of the wells that are problematic are on this side of the railroad tracks, on this side of the river. And I think I know why we shouldn't, we can't drill on the other side of the river, because the water's got to go on this side of the river and this side of the tracks. That's just my assumption. But it also seems like whenever you take a bunch of water out, you change the flow, whether it's above ground or below ground. I know that from, in that meeting, I talked about some of my living in the oil field. When you pump certain places hard, you dissipate other places. So are we sure that if we do this, we're not going to do harm to any other wells right there in that locale? Because it looked like the three sites we have selected to try to drill on are within, I'm going to say a core of a mile or so of this well. And it looks like our redundancy would allow us to go a little bit further and perhaps do something different, so.
Possibly, but our wells are kind of in strategic locations as well, with backbone infrastructure that helps support and transmit that water up to bench areas and so forth. And so the cost could be definitely higher. There's risk of transferring the water rights as well to a different location, of those transfer processes being contested. And so immediately, we're kind of looking within the relative vicinity so that we can plug and play this well in. We do have a hydrogeologist on board that has reviewed this and that has also reviewed the data with our existing well and the perforations that we've seen on that, and he believes that the risk is low of impacting some of those other wells if we develop it correctly.
So now I've got to go back to the other side. Do we know what made this precipitously change? Because it seems like there had to be something happen out there for us to shift so dramatically from what was stated as a fairly secure well for the next five to, I don't know, 29 years. And it had a dramatic shift. Do we have any idea of what could have become a source for that?
We're looking at some possibilities within that vicinity. It's hard to know, because we also had a drier year. During a drier year, you have less dilution as well. And so I don't believe this was a temporary spike, though. I believe we've received a certain slug of nitrate that we're seeing, and whether that has been long-term or whatnot, that we don't know fully. The picture, we're still trying to develop on that.
But you don't know where that came from?
What possibilities are you considering? You mentioned you have possibilities.
Some of those possibilities are septic systems. You know, part of the study identified septic systems within the outlying communities that are within the county along South Fifth. It is known that there's a high nitrate plume at that location. We've been testing some of our other well sites that were shut down to nitrates to determine, are they seeing any additional fluctuations or things like that? And so we're still currently in that process, and we hope to kind of root that out and resolve that. But that'll require some additional soil sampling and trying to develop some isotope sampling to identify, you know, what really is the source.
So is it advisable to drill another well in the same general vicinity when we don't know what is causing the problem in the well, in well number two? I mean, is it, are we going to end up having to drill a multitude of test wells? I mean, it just, what's the logic? If we're already in an unknown contamination situation and we're going to drill another well in the same location?
No, and I certainly understand that concern, and that's what we've used our consultant and our hydrogeologist to understand that and look at, you know, some of our activities, some of the known conditions with other wells. And their determination is if we do drill deeper and get under that barrier, because there's multiple levels within our aquifer, some of those layers are separated by other clay layers that help seal that off. When developing a well, or even a test well, we're looking and we're doing some discrete level testing between each one of those layers to determine, you know, what the constituents are within that water-bearing zone and truly identify if, you know, where we're going to achieve that production layer with the water quality that we need.
So when you do figure out what actually causes that, because I'm sure you're going to figure it out at some point, I'd like to know what caused that contamination?
Okay.
If it actually was the septic's down South Fifth, or if it was some other weird thing?
Yeah, we'll try and update our previous nitrate presentation and present something to that effect to the council.
Will this well go in the Meek Creek aquifer, the fast-flowing one that we get 77% of our water from? Or is this, if it's the South Fifth, it looks to me like it's in that aquifer. Understand what I'm saying?
Right, yeah. So what we have is the Portnif aquifer that is contributing from the Meek Creek watershed. That's the high-flowing aquifer, and that's the aquifer that this particular well resides in. There is what we call the eastern aquifer that sits up, and there's kind of a natural barrier with the basalt along South Fifth. What we found within the previous nitrate study is with the fractured basalt, there is a potential zone that some of that is leaching through and reaching into the Portnif Portniv aquifer.
Okay, so, what you're saying is that there's a commingling of the aquifers down there that we don't really understand. We have suspicions about. And our suspicions are that the South Fifth is a contributor because that aquifer is bleeding into this aquifer at that point.
Right, that's correct.
We, we don't really know that, do we?
I might defer to Hannah on that because she's kind of been working with some of that particular study.
You know, I just, I just need to understand this because it's such a dramatic change from a year ago.
Right, great, great questions. Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Administrator. So, we don't know. I mean, we, we believe South Fifth aquifer can go under the basalt and is likely impacting well two and 28. Did it cause this shift in well two? I mean, we just, we aren't there yet. So, we're look, we're trying to look at all the land uses around there and just, you know, go through it with a fine-tooth comb and say, okay, what, what is actually doing it? And it's rather slow, painstaking work to just look at every, you know, every single lot, every single land use sewer, every water line, sewer line, just try and stormwater and just go, okay, what, what did we miss that could have done this? And it could have been something from two years ago that happened. It could have been something from 20 years ago. So, we're, we're just, we may not have in the end an answer for you, Councilwoman. Unfortunately, I hope we do. I'm curious.
So, I mean, we dynamited a lot in that general area for the connector.
Mm-hmm.
I would assume that the seismic system could create cracks elsewhere. We've had some minor earthquakes that have had vibrations here and that could create minor. So, we really can't really tell until we find out.
No, we did a, we did a study this summer to look at, you know, is it possible to, we can, they did, oh gosh, seismic studies? I'm just, this is not my area of expertise. To look at, is it possible for water to go from South Fifth over to Ross Park? Is that a solid basalt or are there gravel layers in there? And that analysis said, yeah, there are likely gravel layers. We didn't see a water path, but there's places where certainly water could get through. And so, we can state that this seems likely. But it also could be something in the immediate vicinity. And so, that's what we're also looking at.
So, the bottom line is we can't tell on the one side what's caused it. We just know that the result is we've got a compromised well that needs to be replaced.
Yes, and, and it was on the schedule in two to five years, just like the study had indicated. I mean, it is nearly 100 years old. And so, at that point, you know, we start losing some of the confidence on the screening ability. We do inspect those quite regularly and we test them. But at the same time, you know, we don't want to push it until the maximum limit and wait until that fails at some point.
I've got one more question. The, the well that's nearby, what does it produce in gallons?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't come up with that figure.
You know what I mean? Is, is it close to the 400,000 or 400 million gallons that you talked about?
Well, it's, it's going to be more than that now because it's going to be the primary. So, well two was kind of the primary that ran continuously year-round. The well that was 90 feet away is kind of the backup during summer operations when demand requirements are high. It has a higher production limit, but we've had to equip it with, or we're looking to equip it with a variable frequency drive so that we can ramp up and down those demand patterns.
So, we can get through this year with that well being our burdened well? And this well will come online to be the backup, the kind of reversing roles?
Possibly, yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll see once we get development. This might prove out to be a better well in the end that may have a higher production capacity or it may have a lower production capacity. So, well two currently produces at a rate of 1,000 gallons per minute.
Yeah, well, I just had to ask these questions because my awareness is that we, we can deplete resources underground just as easily as we can deplete resources above ground. And I just needed to know kind of how we were approaching this to see if we were weighing all those options. And, you know, one of the things, I think it was in that study that I, I wrote down was that our comprehensive plan objective is to protect and enhance the quality and the quantity of water within the Portniv Valley aquifer. And that was stated a year ago and it looks like we haven't protected. You know what I'm saying? That's our, our operational guideline, but we didn't do it. We haven't paid enough attention and it's not just us. I know there's other players.
It's, it's certainly not just the city. It's a, it's a regional effort, you know? When some of our source water comes from, you know, other areas outside of the city limits, from watersheds to county limits to other things like that, you know, we have somewhat of a limited control over there. But we try and create, you know, wellhead protection and watershed protection areas and things like that. And so...
By drilling down there, are we in the floodplain?
No.
Okay. And last question. This is a little extraneous, but one of the things you also mentioned, Hannah, in that deal was it'd take about a year to get all the players back to the table, the counties and the cities and stuff. Are we there yet?
We have been meeting for the past year to try and say, okay, what are our solutions? Because we know, we know that septic tanks are influencing it. Even if it's not this cause for well two to go do this jump, there's a, there is a septic influence that we're seeing, you know, in numerous wells. And so, we have been meeting with the county, the city, DEQ, Southeast Idaho Public Health, Chubbick, and to say, all right, what are other communities doing? What are potential solutions? What's feasible in Pocatello? And we have a lot of, and what's feasible in our region, really. So, it's not, because in Pocatello, we have a lot of great ordinances in place. And I would say Chubbick has ordinances in place that are, you know, we connect to sewer. And so, what, what is feasible in the region, especially as we continue to grow.
When I watched that, we had a lot of discussion about area impact. And it seems like Idaho does not have a very thought-out area of impact because other places allow cities where the congregated population is to say their area of impact extends five, 10 miles beyond their borders. But I don't think we do that.
That is not my area.
We had some discussion.
For a finding question, Chris?
Well, my, my question kind of relates to this too because I had asked Jared for some information and he sent me council powers and responsibilities, you know, from AIC. And, you know, it says that one of the powers and responsibilities of city council is to negotiate with county commissioners and area of city impact for future organization annexation and land use regulations which will apply within the area. And so, since Mink Creek, for example, is so critical, as I understand it, to our water supply, both in terms of recharge and et cetera, I'm just wondering, you know, why we're kind of where we are now and we're just kind of taking the, the initial steps toward even trying to have those conversations when it's, when it's one of council's responsibilities? We apparently have an exercise that our due diligence...
That's a good question. When you're talking about the area of impact, typically, especially here in Idaho, you're looking at areas that, that the city will serve with utilities, the city services, areas that have direct, the city has a direct influence. The water questions here and you're looking at the aquifers, those are so large that doesn't, that's way outside of a city impact. And so, typically, you're looking at areas that you anticipate the city can grow into within the next 20 years or so. That's a pretty generalized standard of, of where that area of impact would lie.
Well, the reason I raised the issue of area impact, we have, as a council, had influence, working with, I don't remember if Forest Service BLM, but we went up Mink Creek and we got the roads put back, we got the camping stop down so the beaver ponds could provide a better service of recharge there. And my other experience has been in other places where a city actually decreed that they were being infringed on up to 10 miles out by nitrates. And they were able to create a dialogue where it, it caused the people who were putting in new septic tanks, they had to upgrade to the higher standard of how they cared for their water going into those septic tanks.
And I, I think that's a valid point. And I think your previous statement where you talked about some of the restrictions we have here in Idaho, I, I'm not positive if that actual area of impact is a line that we draw in our, in our comprehensive plan on. And so, there's, there can be some impacts that go beyond that line that affect the city's services. And we can have those conversations with, especially like the county.
Yeah, and I know this is way beyond this thing.
Yeah, it is.
But we're, our discussion is still about nitrates and the intrusion of nitrates into our system that's caused us to be in this predicament. So, I don't think it's way beyond our...
The, the area of impact, though, is more of a, a boundary around the city for development purposes, not necessarily, yeah, in Idaho, yes.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I'm wondering, since none of us are experts on what has been done elsewhere in Idaho and, you know, what the laws really are, whether or not we could have legal do some investigation around areas of impact and what that, you know, what are, what are the options? I mean, what, what is cast in stone, what isn't cast in stone, et cetera, et cetera, so that we actually know. And then, secondly, when is our current rate study? When does our current rate study expire?
So, the current rate study went through a period up through 2024.
Okay.
So, it was for five years, beginning 2020 through 2024.
So, you had said that, that you had, not you, but the plan was that this well would have been, well two would have needed replacement in two to five years. And so, is it, is this, the money for this engineering study not included in the rate study? And if not, why wasn't it?
It was not included in the rate study because it was beyond the projected years that the rate study captured, only through 2024. We didn't see this increased trend at this, this well and anticipate that this well would, would fail within the current rate study. And so, that's why, you know, part of our, our initial plan would have been to include this. It was, it was coming right up front based on this recent study.
But if the rate study goes through 24, started in 20, and you had stated, I believe, this evening, that was anticipated that this well would need replacement in two to five years. And that places it within the window covered by this rate study. I'm just not understanding...
That was based on the recent study that we provided this last summer or spring.
The rate study was a year earlier.
Yeah, the rate study was developed back in 2019.
Right, but so at that point, you, you didn't, you thought you were...
We thought we were okay for this study.
And it sounds as though we're managing. So, is this, is this, obviously, it needs to be, that, that water source needs to be replaced. I don't think that's, certainly, that's not a question that I have. But it appears that it's, we can't sustain what we're doing now in the long run. But it's also not if we don't get this done tomorrow, we're going to have a cataclysmic event. And so, I, I am wondering why, it's my understanding that some sort of wish list relative to those ARPA funds is under development. And if this isn't an emergency, I would prefer that we have some kind of a more comprehensive understanding of, you know, what are all the items on that wish list and some kind of prioritization process, rather than simply proceeding to spend money with no plan.
So, I will address the first part of that, that question, talking about the emergency. We've only been without the operation of this for relatively four months now.
Right.
These are our off-demand months. Based on our current facility planning study, within that first five-year to 10-year planning window, we needed a new source for 2,000 gallons per minute. We are increasing. We are growing quickly. I, I do feel that if we don't replace this well and by continuing the operation this summer, we, we don't know if we're going to have another drought year this summer. The summer might be really tight and we might have to ask for water restrictions and other things like that if we get into a situation where our facilities are stressed.
But we're not going to have the well by the summer anyway because it takes about a year to bring it, drill it and bring it online. Am I, I think I heard that.
Well, we're, we're looking at a window of roughly three to four months for design so that we can drill that well and know the details of what our production capacity is, what the water quality would be. And then, the actual construction and obtaining equipment, which in today's world, that's, that's part of our problem we're seeing as well, is, is long lead times of, of procuring equipment and getting that. And so, it's kind of a, a storm of events, I would say at this point.
So, it's likely that we're not going to be getting water from a new well this summer, whether we have a drought or we don't have a drought? I mean, that's if it takes three or four months for design and then, you know, by then, we're at summer. So, anyway, that just clarifies the timeline for me. Thank you.
Yes, Council President?
I'd like to propose a hypothetical, Justin. If this plume decreases from the current level, at what level of contamination would you feel comfortable bringing well two back online?
Oh, boy. You know, our previous sample at this well was at a six. So, it doubled in a quarter. We have to quarterly sample our wells, which is by regulation, it, it's an increased sampling plan. After you exceed five milligrams per liter, you're basically on a watch list, trying to monitor that more frequently so that you don't see a, an all-of-a-sudden spike and you've had a year of history of, of, of doing that. There's certainly a lot of risk. We've had indications, we've, we've typically utilized well 28 as our indicator well for high nitrates. And when it, it gets above eight or approaches that, we typically shut it down because it is a backup well for us. That well, it sits on the south end of Ross Park. It did not see the same spike that this particular well did. So, that means that we've got something there somewhat locally that's impacting the well is what's suspect to me, so.
So, did that, sorry, did I answer your question? At seven or eight or nine, would you put that well back online?
I would not.
Would you wait it to go to five or six or...
Because I think you're putting public, public health at risk at that point. We are blended within our system, but, and so, when, when we exceeded that, we were able to, to prove out in the system that we were operating below that. But I think there is, is definitely a, a big risk if we did operate it and then a month later, it's, it spiked up and the, the notification and the public at risk, especially for, high nitrates impact infants, babies and pregnant nursing mothers. Nitrates can starve the, starve the blood of oxygen. And so, it's... Nitrates can starve the, starve the blood of oxygen, and so it puts them at risk. It creates a blue baby syndrome. And so, you know, that certainly, we could certainly operate it with a, we could ask DEQ if we could operate that, but we would have that public advisory floating above us to not drink the water.
So at this point, we should just consider well two dead?
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
And I was gonna ask sort of a follow-up question, but I think that kind of answers it as, I was gonna ask the likelihood of ever bringing it back online.
Well, yeah, and there again, I mean, it, it was drilled 1926. Certainly, some of the equipment that's in that hole isn't that old, but the actual casing is that old, so.
So it's probably seen its life.
It's seen its time. It's a shallow, shallow well at only 89 feet, too, and so it's more susceptible to higher contaminants because of the layer that it's in.
And I just had one other quick comment is, and this is really switching gears, but using ARPA funds, it seems to me this is an ideal use of ARPA funds, so I like that
Couple of questions. Could we, I don't believe our system is detailed enough for us to just irrigate with that well, all that Ross Park complex and that, is it? I mean, you know, it seems like if you use a well, you could kind of tell what it's doing better than just letting it set idle and turn it on once in a while to test it.
Sure. You know, the current configuration of, of system components that plug into the irrigation, there would definitely be some backbone infrastructure that would be required to convert that.
Added cost doing it. Second one, what's the difference in pumping from 89 feet versus the depth, I think you said well three? There's every, every little bit probably has an added cost for lifting that water.
Sure, more energy and lift.
So how deep is the well three?
Well three, I believe it was 200? Yeah, it's just over 200.
Okay, so it's not that
Right, right.
Double, but that's
Right, that's correct.
Not like we're going down 12 or 1800.
Yeah, and we have, most of our new wells, we, we drill and develop to roughly about 300 feet. So it doesn't mean we're pumping from that layer, but we are looking to the future.
And you're looking to see what level, I think, when you drill, you test the different levels you appropriate.
Right, and it, and it all, you know, withdraw down, and there's a lot within that.
Mr. Mayor, when will we be, as a council, looking at the plan for dispersing that, whatever it was, 1.2 mil or whatever it was in ARPA funds? When, when will that?
As, as you know, the correspondence that you had with our Public Works Director, they were looking at March.
Okay.
And so the study session in March is when we'll be having those discussions.
So a little more than a month?
Mm-hmm.
So
Well, yeah, two months. No, two months. Two study sessions, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, two study sessions, but a little bit more than a month from now.
Yep, okay. All right, Justin, thank you. So we have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 12, City Creek Management Area Use Agreement, Alpine Endurance Medicine, Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to approve, subject to legal department review, a use agreement with Alpine Endurance Medicine, allowing for the use of portions of City Creek Management Area to conduct program associated with wilderness medicine education and approve annual renewal and approve an annual renewal barring any significant changes, change or changes to the programming and, and subject to the Parks and Recreation Director's review. Alpine Endurance Medicine will be responsible for any damages incurred by their use, pay applicable fees, and provide liability insurance, naming the city as an additional insured. Alpine Endurance Medicine shall also contribute annual trailhead and trail area maintenance assistance in the City Creek Management Area as condition of the use agreement. Councilwoman Lyric?
I move that we approve, subject to legal department review, a use agreement with Alpine Endurance Medicine that allows them to use portions of City Creek Management Area as outlined in Agenda Number 12.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Lyric and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Lyric?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13 is items from the audience. We've had nobody sign up for the, to speak, items from the audience, so with that, we are adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask a question? This doesn't have to be part of the official meeting.